Welcome to our City Council meeting. In the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is given opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. Each speaker shall be allotted three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council. Groups shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. Thank you for participating in your city government. I'm going to call the meeting to order. So we're going to have an invocation by Pastor Alden Reitman from the Amazing Grace Baptist Church.
If you'd like to stand up for that.
Yeah, we'll stand for that. And then we'll follow up with Mr. Cooper, leading the Pledge of Allegiance.
Almighty God, our Father in heaven, we rejoice, our Father, that we live in a country where we can have these kind of meetings, where we have people that are dedicated to community service. We thank you, our Father, for this council. We thank you, our Father, that indeed that they care enough for St. Cloud to commit themselves, these servants. And Lord, it's an awesome task that they have. But we know, our Father, that it involves so many things, including money, things that many people have problems with here in this county. We pray to encourage them and guide them in Holy Spirit wisdom. We pray, our Father, to be with St. Cloud and bless this city. I pray, our Father, to give and receive with our priest department to watch over our officers and protect them and receive for them. And I pray, Father, for our county deputy sheriff for their safety and their health and all. Pray, our Father, to be with the fire department. And all the things they do, they risk their life and their limbs every time they get a call out. I pray, our gracious Lord, to be with each one here in this council, to recognize it's an awesome thing to be able to do this here in the United States of America. Bless this council and bless the United States, we pray in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Mayor Blackwell, Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Here.
Councilmember Cooper.
Here.
Councilmember Askew.
Here.
Councilmember Trace.
Here.
So we're going to start off by doing the presentation of Employee of the Month. Ms. Ivy De La Cruz will be presenting and Carol Hale. We've been trying to keep this a surprise for a while, so I'm hoping it is. At this moment, I would like Ms. Claudia to please come up here. It's very hard to keep a surprise when your employee works in the city clerk's office. Claudia was fitting in, filling in for the PIO's office when a tour that had been canceled due to a conflict arrived at City Hall. On Thursday, May 2nd, a group of students with special needs and two teachers after walking from St. Cloud High School in the rain to tour City Hall with the mayor. The group advised that they did not receive the cancellation. Claudia immediately set about to make the tour happen. She quickly gathered bags of promotional items for the students as souvenirs and escorted them on a grand tour. The tour, on the tour, she explained what each department did, and the students asked several questions and told how the families had dealings with the cities to include permits, paying bills, et cetera. Claudia answered whatever questions she could and even was able to have staff from each department speak to the group and help and educate the students as well. It was just a really nice thing what she did, but thankfully, the mayor was actually able to join the group, and the students and the teachers were grateful and happy for the tour. Claudia made sure the tour was a success. This is only one of the many examples when Claudia has stepped up the plate to make things happen, excuse me, and help in our department. We are very fortunate to have Claudia a member of the city clerk's office. Now, yeah, and I'd like to ask our city clerk to please come down and say a few words.
Good evening, I'm Linda Jaworski, the city clerk. I just wanted to also add that Claudia is very, very good employee for our department. She has been instrumental also in converting ADA requirements to upload on our website. We're getting that underway. She's also helped other departments do that, as well as posting our new website.
So this is going to be the presentation in recognition of Donna Miller's retirement
She's also helped with that, getting the new website up and getting all of our content
by Gloria Emanuel. Donna, come up here, too.
in on each department. So she's always willing to jump in whenever needed. She just does her job and gets it done. Nobody really knows the amount of pressure she puts on herself, and we do that in our
Good evening, everyone. I was getting ready to bring her up, but I'm here before you to do a presentation in
office. We do know that, and we want to show this as our appreciation.
recognition of Donna Miller.
So thank you, Claudia.
And I'm also asking for the other finance staff members, if they would please, if they don't mind, please come up. Don't be bashful. Donna Miller began her career with the city of St. Cloud as an administrative secretary in January of 1988 in the Public Works Department. Donna transferred to the Finance Department in the same role in 1990 and was promoted to Executive Administrative Assistant in 2016. Donna served the city for more than 31 years, and during those years, she dedicated her expertise and played an important part in the overall success of this city. Therefore, in recognition of your many years of commitment, we present you with this beautiful watch as our token of appreciation. Best wishes and congratulations on your retirement.
I really don't have any prepared remarks. I just want to say thank you to my coworkers that I've worked with for all these years. You've made my employment here very good, and I love my finance family so much. They're great.
Any person who desires to comment on any item not on this agenda is provided this opportunity
And thank you, council, for the things that you've done for the employees, our great benefits. I'm really enjoying mine.
to address the city council. Each person is requested to complete a sign-in form to be provided to the presiding officer prior to or as soon as practical thereafter. The person addresses the council. So I have, no, consent? I have two. The first one is Ms. Edie Wright.
Hello. I am Edie Wright. I am with the St. Cloud Holiday Festival, 1685 Cassidy Drive, if you need that. I wanted to come speak to you regarding, I guess, a past meeting that was held a few weeks ago that I wasn't involved in, where I guess the business owners came and decided that they wanted to come to you requesting the events in St. Cloud have different setup as far as the tents being backwards, a couple of other things. And I just wanted to take the opportunity to come speak to you to say what we've already done, what we had already put into place for this coming year, to know that their requests are not being ignored, just so you can know that, you know, we do take safety very seriously. We do take their request very seriously. And just to let you know what we're doing. So back in January, Dave Askew and I had discussed, as a business owner, what we could do. And one of his requests is to move the stage for the business owners, I believe it was Cynthia Weatherholtz on Blisology, had requested we move the stage. No problem, we moved it. It's going to be this year in the parking lot near Dave Askew. He's agreed to give us our power, don't forget.
Oh, did I say that?
Because that was the only limitation, reason why we couldn't move it sooner. So no problem, we totally agreed to do that. The other thing was to move the tents backwards or put them in the middle of the street. And Dave and I talked at length about this a few times. Obviously, we know from Richard Tonks that we cannot put the booths in the middle of the street because of the fire, we have to leave a fire alley so that fire trucks or emergency vehicles can get in. One of the other requests, though, was to simply flip the tents backwards. And after going back and forth, I did reach out to Richard Tonks, and after going back and forth with him at length, what we had come up with is, unfortunately, our event is so large with so many people, expecting 15,000 people in New York Avenue in St. Cloud, that limitation for 10-foot of a sidewalk is just insufficient. And now we also have benches, we have trash cans are all lovely, but with that, it would create really a lot of obstacles. Now, we could slide them back to 12-foot. I know that was another idea that we, that we had tossed out, but even 12-foot would be like the worst day ever at Disney. It would really be a ton of people in literally not much space. So I just wanted you to know what we had considered, what we talked about with Richard Tonks, the things that we are doing. The other thing that we're doing is we did strategically put 14 empty spaces to help the businesses, one in front of you. So we are listening. So I just wanted to let you know.
City manager, do you think you could work with both Ms. Wright and the business groups to try to come up with an amenable solution for everyone?
Yes, we can do that. Actually, Mr. Tonks' boss is the fire chief, and he's the authority having jurisdiction, and he's talked to me about this issue, and I think we could come up with something that will work for everybody.
Okay. So should I reach out to you directly?
Yeah, I'll give you my card, and I'll pitch in touch with the fire chief.
Yeah, I probably have it from last year.
Actually, the fire chief's right back there.
Okay.
Do you have my card, would you like?
I have one.
All right.
But thank you. So, okay. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
We will take care of that.
Next up, I have Mr. Bob Stein. If you could state your name and address for the record.
My name is Bob Stein. I live at 4707 Mesa Verde Drive, St. Cloud, Florida. I'm here to talk to you about what I'm calling Pine Lake Preserve. My wife and I, along with our neighbors, have been before you regarding the rezoning requests for the property bordered by Old Canoe Creek, Mesa Verde Drive, Lake Trudy Drive, and Lago Court twice before. The first time, the new owners of the property were calling it Old Canoe Creek Medical; the second time, they called it Conifer Creek. In both instances, city council heard the concerns of the surrounding homeowners and denied the new owners the request to change the rural estate zoning of the property to professional or medium-density residential. The surrounding homeowners expressed many concerns. I delivered a petition to you signed by the owners of 120-plus homes, outlining some of them. A loss of privacy, security, home values were at the top of the list. Traffic and traffic safety concerns were among the list, as every vehicle that would enter or exit their property would have to make at least one U-turn on Old Canoe Creek. Additionally, the neighboring properties experienced wet season flooding, which many felt would become worse with development on the property, and the ability of the city to build a retention pond if deemed necessary would be lost. Lastly, the homeowners were all told that the property would remain undeveloped forever due to the natural gas line that runs diagonally through it. While apparently, this is a myth, nevertheless, it's what the homeowners were sold, what we paid for, and what they expected. I'm asking for your assistance with this property one more time. The property is for sale, zoned as rural estate. As you know, this allows four homes per acre, and the 4.84-acre parcel would permit the building of 16-plus homes in our backyards. This remains unacceptable to the neighboring homeowners. I'm asking you to direct city manager or appropriate person to initiate the purchase of this property as a nature preserve and to designate it as Pine Lake Preserve. Separately, I ask you to designate the city manager or appropriate person to purchase the adjoining property that lies to the south and east of the single-family home that borders this property. You can see in the attached photo there, along with the natural gas line. The purchase of one or both of these properties is in everyone's best interest. It's consistent with the city's strategic planning goals to help maintain a rural, small-town feel, enhances property values, safety, and the desirability of the city. It also supports the green mission. Purchasing one or both of these properties protects the financial interests of the property owners, as well as the property owners of Pine Lake Estates, Anthem Park, and the residents along Old Canoe Creek Road. It's a win-win solution for all involved and would provide a pleasant green space for all the residents of this city. So I submit this request to you for your consideration, and I thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who has any public comment?
I didn't fill out the paperwork.
Please come up.
Okay, thank you.
State your name and address for the record, and then when you get done, you'll need to fill out a form.
Yes, absolutely. My name is Enrique Capont, and I live in 2528 Shelburne Way in St. Cloud, Florida. That's good enough?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I'm here because my wife and I, we've been residents now for fantastic two and a half years. And I've been in this field of work for at least 18 years, which is mental health, substance abuse, and behavioral health, homelessness, and everything that comes with that. I am very aware that that is a problem in many ways that's touching all communities. And what I'd like to do is, I'm representing, I work for an agency called Retreat Behavioral Health, and we want to together see if we can join forces with some of the providers that you already have in this town to continue to combat the problem with substance abuse, mental health, and et cetera. I'm carrying some business cards and some flyers with me today, if anybody is interested. But beyond that, personally, I am going to be totally transparent, and I am a person that have been there years ago. And so the system work, whether it be grassroots, faith-based, or clinical treatment, I have operated in all areas of it. And what I like to do is offer my knowledge, my experience in all those areas, in both sides of the fence, to the city of St. Cloud and see how can I help. Just because the organization that I am on board with now is an organization that does insurance, I am also very aware that not everybody that gets to that point has the resources to get the high-end treatments, if you will. I am well-versed and knowledgeable in the four county areas as to places that are of good reputation, not some of the flap houses that we know. Every place has its bad players, every industry, if you will. So just because I primarily work with an agency that is insurance-required or soft-pay doesn't mean that I wouldn't help somebody that is requesting help and to try to position them anyway according to their criteria, their needs, and their means. And that is pretty much, in a nutshell, what I wanted to share here today to start with. So I appreciate the time, and thank you.
Thank you. If you'd like to leave any documents with the clerk.
I will.
We'll put those on the record.
And I fill out the paper.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. The next portion of tonight's meeting is the consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now is the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if staff or members of city council wish to speak on a consent item, they have the same opportunity. So I have one request to address the council. It's Mr. Eric Larson. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, members of the council. My name is Eric Larson. I'm the owner of Prescriptions Unlimited Pharmacy, address 2521 13th Street, St. Cloud, 34769. Today, I come for you to address the onsite employee clinic that you're going to be seeing on the consent agenda today. I want to be upfront first, I do not want to be here to incur any additional cost to the city or municipality. I also respect the process, during the bid process, it was done in a very professional and fair manner. I just wanted to come up and kind of bring up some other points that may be something that we may have overlooked or potentially may want to look at in the future. You know, everyone's looking at healthcare expenditures right now, from Washington DC all the way to county-level municipality cities like this as well, including drug expenditure. I think we potentially missed an opportunity to do business with a local business like myself, who has, you know, fiduciary responsibility with the community, and also has a very long, deep-rooted history with our, with our community. You know, the idea of the clinic for me, when we were going through this process, was that we would help increase utilization, decrease spending by lowering health claims and costly PBM claims, which are through the pharmacy benefit manager, as you may know. That's the idea and the premise. So, you know, going with the cost-effective option for the clinic is a perfect example of what we need to do, but also helping to save money on the other avenues and expenditures in other, in other parts of the, of the program. So, you know, I just wanted to, you know, kind of use an example, school district of Osceola County just kind of did a similar movement. They've gone with a smaller-type clinic model, and they're looking at other avenues to save, including outsourcing vaccinations to small businesses and also drug formularies as well. So I'm sure you guys may be aware of what they're doing over there at the school districts. You know, taking away from the PBM spending is pretty much the idea here of saving money. Drug expenditure is number one, you see it on the news every day. So, you know, having to be able to create your own formulary and doing different things like that would have saved extra money. And I look, it may be something in the future that we address that, maybe digging into our PBM claims and also drug expenditure. You know, I had an employee come in the other day, employee, come in and bring in their Canadian importation, new program that we have with the city employees. You know, 90% of those medications are very generic and cheap. So I know we're looking at avenues, but maybe we're not asking the right people to help with those types of decisions. So again, I don't ask anything really here to, you know, cost the city any money or do anything, but maybe in the future, we look at a health committee or consult with our local providers before we make decisions that are complex like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you. Mr. Sturgeon, do we have several that were bid in the platform?
Yes, sir. We went through a complete procurement process according to our procurement policy and went through both interviews and presentations by all the different entities that could provide that service of our health clinic. And as you know, it's been very successful in reducing the healthcare costs of our employees and increased employee wellness and health. So it did go through the proper process.
And we're using about the same plan that the county is? Or is that the same plan? Or was it?
I don't know who the county's provider is.
Oh, I thought maybe it was.
No, sir. I don't know if it is or not, but we did go with the low bid through the process.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
So I'd like to just say something. I sit on a lot of selection committees in my day job, and I know sometimes there are people that get, you know, selected for selection committees that maybe, like, whatever the topic is, isn't necessarily the expertise. And I know I looked at the attachments in the agenda, and it was very complex, and I wouldn't pretend to understand the overall package. You know, like, sometimes you just look at one little tiny portion of the package, you say, oh, it's cheaper, but you know, maybe if you take a look at the, as a sum, like, it's not cheaper. So, I mean, I would suggest the idea that Mr. Larson is saying, where we have like a committee that has the expertise in healthcare and billing invoicing, I mean, all that stuff, you know, beyond a committee. I mean, I would support that. Anything we can do to just get the best service for our employees, I would be all in support of. Councilmember Askew.
I would be in support of that. One is just more for the local. I mean, we have our hospital, we have Prescriptions Unlimited, and some others that are in the town. Maybe they have something that we aren't unaware of.
They actually did put in a bid together.
Okay.
And we're not successful in that bid.
Do we give any kind of preference in our bidding process to local vendors?
That is a requirement of the city council, but again, we go through the entire bid process. It is in accordance with our current policy.
Did they, did they miss part of the bid, that they didn't get it all completely?
No, I actually have the final scoring sheet. There was eight bids, and the St. Cloud Physician Management and St. Cloud Regional Medical Center have actually finished seven out of the seven that submitted.
And that's on different?
Correct. We have a scope of work that we put out, what we want that entity to perform, and then we go out and do those bids and presentations.
Okay. Thank you. Your light's still on.
I'm sorry.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak to the consent agenda? Hearing none. Does council have any comments or would like to pull any items for discussion or separate vote? Oh, I'm sorry, your light. I see why Nathan ignores me a lot.
Well, and I would, just to clarify, and this is something we try to remember, and obviously Deputy Mayor Matheny's running a first meeting, but just for the record, the item you were just talking about was item G on the agenda.
Okay.
provide that service of our health clinic. And as you know, it's been very successful in reducing the healthcare costs of our employees and increased employee wellness and health. So it did go through the proper process.
And we're using about the same plan that the, the county is? Or is it, is that the same plan? Or was it?
I, I don't know who the county's provider is.
Oh, I thought maybe it was.
No, sir. I don't know if it is or not, but we did go with the low bid through the process.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
So I'd like to just say something. I sit on a lot of selection committees in my day job, and I know sometimes there are people that get, you know, selected for selection committees that maybe like whatever the topic is, isn't necessarily the expertise, and I know I looked at the attachments in the agenda, and it was very complex, and I wouldn't pretend to understand the overall package, you know, like sometimes you just look at one little tiny portion of the package, you say, oh, it's cheaper, but you know, maybe if you take a look at the, as a sum, like it's not cheaper. So, I mean, I would suggest the idea that Mr. Larson is saying where we have like a committee that has the expertise in healthcare and billing invoicing, I mean, all that stuff, you know, beyond a committee, I mean, I would support that. Anything we can do to just get the best service for our employees, I would be all in support of.
Councilmember Askew.
I would, I would be in support of that. One is just more for the local, I mean, we have our hospital, we have Prescriptions Unlimited, and some others that are in the town, maybe they have something that we don't unaware of.
They actually did put in a bid together.
Okay.
And we're not successful in that bid.
Do we give any kind of preference in our bidding process to local vendors?
That is a requirement of the, the city council, but again, we go through the entire bid process, and is in accordance with our current policy.
Did they, did they miss part of the bid, that they didn't get it all completely?
No, I actually have the final scoring sheet. There was eight bids, and the St. Cloud Physician Management and St. Cloud Regional Medical Center have actually finished seven out of the seven that submitted.
And that's on different?
Correct, we have a scope of work that we put out, what we want that entity to perform, and then we go out and, and do those bids and presentations.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Your light's still on.
I'm sorry. Back in.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak to the consent agenda? Hearing none. Does council have any comments or would like to pull any items for discussion or separate vote? Oh, I'm sorry, your light. I see why Nathan ignores me a lot.
Well, and I would, just to clarify, and this is something we try to remember, and obviously Deputy Mayor Matheny's running your first meeting, but just for the record, the item you were just talking about was item G on the agenda. So what we have folks that come up and wanna address, and we wanna make sure that we clearly, because we all appear know what item's being discussed, but I'm not sure everybody in the audience does. We have comments on two items that are on the consent agenda, they'd be item, item J is the first one, and I'm not asking for them to be removed for separate votes, but I just wanted to point out an item, and I know Ivy has the, you have the, someone have the language changed for this? This is a resolution related to the Hurricane Irma relief, applications for FEMA grant money that the city's been working on, obviously for a long time. It's our understanding that the, the ultimate potential recovery reimbursement for the city would be in excess of $1 million. The way the process works, as different levels are approved, the, 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 the grant agreement calls for additional modifications or amendments to the grant agreement. You have one on your agenda, item, item J is in fact one, it's the next step up, this adds about $23,000 to the reimbursement amount. So it's, it's anticipated, and we believe it's obviously gonna happen, that there're gonna be more of these agreements down the road that'll get us to the ultimate reimbursement amount that the seeking, that the city is seeking here. So this language that we'd like to add to this resolution is so that these matters do not have to come back to the city council every time we have to enter into an amendment or a modification to the grant agreement. And so by adopting this item, we'd ask that the city council include this language that's on your screen there, which would authorize essentially the mayor to sign off on the, any future modifications that would ultimately bring the increased funding under the program. So that's, when, if, if that's okay, when you, when you go through your consent agenda, we'd ask you to approve the resolution with this minor change in it. Any questions on that?
I'd like to amend that to be the mayor and/or city manager.
Okay.
I, I feel like that's really more appropriate.
Right. And again, the idea is to expedite this so that we don't have to come get it on agenda, so we can certainly do that. And if I can move on, the other item is item M, and this is just to correct a, a, essentially a clarification on the exhibit. On your, on the exhibit item, this is the resolution related to, to, to building fees that are, and is adopting a new building fees. We provided you a page, page four of the exhibit, which has a, there was a typo in it. The highlighted area is what was incorrect, the, the item that's in your packet, and that was distributed publicly, where you see where it says 1159 highlighted there, that amount in your packet is actually listed as $23.18. So when you approve this item, you'd be approving the exhibit that's in front of you with the I'm reading it as it moves. $11.59 amount in there. So we just wanna make sure you clearly understood that the, there was a typo in the, in the exhibit in your packets. And so when you approve the consent item, we'd ask that you approve it with those two items changed on items J and M. Thank you.
Councilmember Cooper.
That, that screen that we just had, that is gonna be $65 charge?
Yes, sir, that's the way that works, yes.
That's when the contractor would hire somebody else to do it, and the paperwork that you have to go through, the city would have to do, that's the $65 charge, right?
That's for permits between, up to $1,000.
Up to how much?
Up to $1,000.
So it goes past, it keeps going?
Then if you look at the, if you look at the exhibit, there's a, there's an increase based on dollar value of the, of the project.
I see that, okay, I got you. I understand. And could I ask you another question back in J? Where you were at?
Yes, sir.
First one?
Yes, sir.
That money is gonna, that $23,000 is going back into the general fund strictly? Every time that FEMA money comes, comes into us, it's coming into the general fund? Or is it coming a certain department?
Well, the city manager can ask, but remember, it's reimbursement money based on, on, on items that the city has documented that were expenses were incurred. So it, it, depending on the reimbursement amount, I imagine it's being reallocated in accordance with the, with the application.
Deputy Mayor?
Sure.
Thank you. I'll give you an example, Mr. Cooper, we repaired the weirs, that came out of the stormwater fund, that will be reimbursed back to the stormwater fund. We did the women's club historical building, that'll go back into the general fund. So there, it will be going into different funds. But right now, they owed us $1.4 million, they've paid almost $365,000, and so there's about, an outstanding balance of about $1 million into different funds. But it's not all general fund money.
So you were gonna move it?
Well, it's, if I show you this, it's actually got all the different departments it would go back into, but it does go across the board from that hurricane recovery.
Okay. So how do you tell which department it goes? Or you just go by need?
Well, as we spent, well, no, sir, as we, as we spent the money, it, it's tracked in accounting to say it came out of this fund, and it would just go back to that fund that's legally required.
You've got a lot of funds that are still behind, I think, for all the hurricane, right?
Well, no, we take it out of contingency, and, and that's why we have a reserve fund, and so that it goes back, it would go back to contingency in each of those funds.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Councilmember Askew.
I don't, I don't mind the idea of blanketing that you sign off on these, or the, or the mayor for that. Can you give us an update?
Absolutely.
Can it be a warrant list that we are notified, so it doesn't just automatically happen? So we're notified that it's going on?
No, sir, no, we'll, we'll include that in the packet, not a problem. That's real simple.
Okay, well, I have, I wanna comment on L, and I wanna pull you for discussion.
L?
So, I guess nobody else has any? Nope. So on item number L, I just wanted to make the comment, I know we're talking about revising the schedule of rates for the solid waste services, and when we had the discussion a couple weeks ago where we were talking about the solid waste fees, of course, when this came up, I was like, wait, you haven't instituted any of the things we talked about in that meeting? And they told me that this is basically like a short-term, a short-term fix, but they're gonna come back with like an overall rate study and proposal for us, so this is just a short-term fix. I know it was something that I was like, all the things we talked about aren't in here. So just wanted to kinda point that out. And then U is the final plat for the Savannah subdivision, and reading the notes on the final plat, it doesn't have where the community is gonna maintain sidewalks and street trees, it's not clear in there. It talks about the landscaping, but it doesn't talk about sidewalks. And so I had asked Mr. Anderson to notify the applicant of that comment, and I think they're here, so I don't know if that's something they wanna come up and discuss.
Can we go back to your L?
Oh, okay.
Bill, then you tell me that that money is gonna be taken out of the, not from the citizens, but it'd come out of the county and Kissimmee?
That's what was, what we had to discuss the other day, Mr. Cooper, that's what we talked about, the council direction was for the update, the study was to make sure that we raise those rates for Kissimmee and the county to cover more of those costs and not put the cost back on the citizens of St., of the residents of St. Cloud. This actually is a 3% increase on gate rates that Jed Landfill has put on us, so we have to transfer those to our citizens.
We can charge it?
It's across the board.
Oh, it is across the board.
Is that correct, Kevin?
So everybody's gonna have a?
Yes, sir, unfortunately.
Hi, Kevin Felbinger, and I'm Public Services Administrator. Yes, this is for our gate rates, so everybody would be paying this one, but I actually received a draft spreadsheet of being able to do different, different areas about being able to sit there, and the, the rates we were talking about raising up and that, and such. I received a spreadsheet where I was able to, right now, be able to look at the differences, if, if, you know, 25% to the, the city residents and 75% to the county, looking at, at different scenarios with that. So I actually have, we're really close to being able to finalize that report, and, and we definitely are, with, with all those comments received at the workshop, we are gonna try to address them the best we can, and I, I will be bringing those back either in August or September to be able to discuss that. And that, that is one of those options we will be bringing, to show that people outside the city may, may have a higher rate than people inside the city.
Great, thank you. When you look, it's especially obvious when you look at the backup on the solid waste element, when you see it's like three to five to one outside of the city, like coming to the transfer station, so I'm glad we'll be capturing that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Ma'am Mayor.
Mr. Cooper?
Thank you. Could we, instead of going ahead and passing this, could we hold it until you get your final report, what you're gonna do?
We, we could, but the, the issue is, is Jed, the Jed Landfill raised their gate rate as of July 1st, so we're already paying 3.6% more to be able to go, take, take the, our, our, our final disposal of our, of our refuge, is we're apparently paying 3.6% more. So if we wait, we'll be paying that additional amount for the next month or two, because like I said, at the earliest I'll be able to get it back is the 22nd of August will be our next council meeting, so it'll be at least another month that we'll be paying that 3.6% without recouping it.
Have you called down to Lakeland or some other landfills?
The, I, I have not, the, like I said, the, the hall route there, we, we had a hard time getting all of our recycling there, and we get a lot more trash than we do recycling. Like I said, if, if you'd like, I, I could call other areas to be able to see, but we'd also have to look at the, the driving.
That's a smart thing to do stuff like that.
Well, if I could, Mr. Cooper, if we had to do that, we'd have to hire some additional staff and have to have additional semis to transport that garbage down to Lakeland, so there'd be an expense there. The other thing is, as you know, and you've seen the budget numbers, the, the solid waste department is, you know, on a very narrow margin right now, until we can get all these rates adjusted correctly.
I'm not saying to do anything, I'm just saying let's get up some figures of prices so we would know what the difference would be.
If that's the pleasure of the council, we definitely can do that.
So are you wanting to vote on that separately? Mr. Cooper?
I don't think you need to vote, do you need to take a vote?
Well, you need to approve the item so that you can, so that the cost can be reflected in the fees that the city is charging at its transfer station. You could circle back if you wanted to do what Mr. Cooper suggested, you could always circle back at a future meeting and then readjust the fees if you find out that you made a deal with another location to do it, so you can always go back and, and deal with that.
Okay, that'll work, that'll work.
I.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Wallace, is your applicant willing to modify the notes to cover the sidewalk and the street trees?
We have no street trees, as I understand it. The sidewalk is the note that you're really asking, and yes, we're willing to do it. We would ask that we could get an approval tonight, so that we can get the Mylar changed and give the mayor the authority to sign it before your next meeting, if that's doable.
I don't, I don't know if that's a, is that procedurally okay?
I'm sorry, Mr. Sturgeon, I were just finishing up on the last discussion, so I've.
Can, can we approve the plat tonight with a condition that we add a note, and before the, as quick as we can get a new Mylar circulated, can we get it to staff for the mayor to sign?
You could do that, 'cause then we could, we, the, the, the city's has to sign off on the Mylar before it gets recorded, so if the condition's not met, then.
You won't sign off on it?
Won't hand you the fancy pen.
Okay.
Here's a fancy pen.
Does it have a feather?
Yeah, you have to sign a Mylar, they have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, these are 62.5-foot lots, right?
I believe that's correct.
Okay. Thumbs up, buddy. Thank you.
All right, so I will enter, oh, Mr.?
I was gonna make a motion.
Oh, okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through U, J is amended, M with the revised Exhibit A, and item U with the added note for the sidewalk and street tree maintenance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0.
Madam Clerk, please read the next item.
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2019-04. An ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida repealing the infrastructure element of the comprehensive plan, providing for the filing of the planning commission's recommendations, improve for publication, applicability and effect, severability copies on file and effective date.
Good morning, Kevin Felbinger, Deputy Public Services Administrator. I would ask that we could have items one through six read in together so we can discuss them all at once, since they're all related, if, if that's okay?
Sure, absolutely.
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2019-05. An ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, adopting the stormwater management element of the comprehensive plan, providing for filing of the planning commission's recommendations, improve for publication, applicability and effect, severability copies on file and effective date. Final public hearing for ordinance number 2019-06. An ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, adopting the natural ground, the nat, natural groundwater aquifer, aquifer recharge element of the comprehensive plan, providing for the filing of the planning commission's recommendations, improve for publication, applicability and effect, severability copies on file and effective date. Final public hearing for ordinance number 2019-07. An ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, adopting the potable water element of the comprehensive plan, providing for filing of the planning commission's recommendations, improve for publication, applicability and effect, severability copies on file and effective date. Final public hearing for ordinance number 2019-08. An ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, adopting the sanitary sewer element of the comprehensive plan, providing for filing of the planning commission's recommendations, improve for publication, applicability and effect, severability copies on file and effective date. Final public hearing for ordinance number 2019-09. An ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, adopting the solid waste element of the comprehensive plan, providing of the filing, filing of the planning commission's recommendations, improve for publication, applicability and effect, severability copies on file and effective date.
Thank you. All six of these ordinance are, are related. The, the, the first ordinance is repealing the infrastructure element of the comprehensive plan, this is the existing one, and the other five are actually going through and implementing new sections of, of the comprehensive plan. As, as it was noted, the first one is restormwater management, the second one is natural groundwater and aquifer, the third one is potable water, the fourth one is sanitary, and the fifth one is solid waste. We, we did these, this is, this is the final hearing with these, like I said, we, we, we went through and tried to update all the maps and everything, along with all the, the studies and stuff like that. I, I know this came forward at the last council meeting, there were scribbler errors throughout these, these documents, and we made sure to address those and be able to update all of those. These updates include goals, objectives, and policies, current facility standards, we updated all the maps, and updated water sewer current flows and projections. And of course, all, all the solid waste stuff with tonnages and, and protected tonnages. This is consistent with our strategic plans, like I said, it has economic development, growth management, and infrastructure, and we recommend approval for all of the ordinances. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer any of them.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions by council? Are there any public comments on these items? All right, so I will entertain a motion on?
You have to go through each item individually.
2019-04.
Motion to approve ordinance number 2019-04.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0.
I'll entertain a motion for 2019-05.
So move.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0.
I'll entertain a motion for 2019-06.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0.
I'll entertain a motion for 2019-07.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0.
I'll entertain a motion for 2019-08.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0.
And I'll entertain a motion for 2019-09.
So move.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please read the next item.
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2019-24. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending Article II definitions and Article III Division 28 exterior lighting standards of the Land Development Code, providing for severability, conflicts, codification, and effective date.
Good evening, Andre Anderson, Planning and Zoning Director. This is the final public hearing for the exterior lighting standards. This has come to you before. We had a workshop on this item, and it was continued. And we would like to make a full presentation on this item and ask that you also take public comment tonight. However, during the time last meeting, we got last minute comments from OEC that we have not been able to fully vet and to consider for this ordinance. Therefore, we would like, again, for you to take public input tonight and then not act on this item, but continue to date certain for final action. So this way it gives the public an opportunity to provide comments and us, the staff, an opportunity to consider the comments from OEC. As we said before, this is an ordinance relating to exterior lighting standards, and it's addressed and to deal with buildings that incorporate exterior lighting, and it excludes agricultural ventures and single-family residential units and duplexes. It requires the middle of a photometric plan, and it sets a standard for the minimum light levels and also requires all light fixtures to be full cut-off fixtures. Essentially, this ordinance is to address the concept of reducing light exposure and light pollution and trespass onto other properties. These are examples of the type of light fixtures that we would expect to see over time as this ordinance is put into place. Again, as I said, it establishes the light intensity levels for properties that are residential areas and non-residential uses, establishes time control for lighting levels after the close of operations, again to avoid any kind of light trespass onto other properties, and also sets the minimum levels. It is consistent with a growth management goal. And DRC and staff reviewed it back in March, and the Planning Commission made recommendation of approval in April. And the St. Cloud Chivas gave an opportunity to review this document and provided no objections to the ordinance. And we are requesting City Council action. Again, as I said earlier, no action tonight, but we'd like for you to at least take public input. And we would ask that, in your recommendation, you continue this item to date certain, which would be October 10th. That's it.
Thank you. Does council have any comments? Okay, I'll open it to public comment. Would anyone like to speak on this item? Please state your name and address for the record. And Dan, he needs to fill out a form too, when he gets done?
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay.
Richard Clark, I'm a practicing landscape architect in the City of St. Cloud, address 1003 Florida Avenue. I just wanted to go out on record again that I've provided my comments, both to staff and also it was read into the record, I believe, at the last council meeting. I have met with staff on July 3, and I look forward to them implementing some of my concerns in regards to providing a document that is going to be of benefit to the city, but also that is actually going to be flexible and usable in order for the professionals to actually implement and bring this into action. The one thing that I will address at this time, just so that all the council members understand, I believe the amortization issue in there is something that you, as council members, need to understand the potential economic ramifications to the business here in St. Cloud, because that will have a big impact, just like for the county when they did the West 192 signage and put in the amortization. That had a very large monetary impact to which the county had to address. Fortunately, the county had the tax money and that revenue from the hotels to help pay for that. But St. Cloud really doesn't have a mechanism that I'm aware of that would be a benefit to be used. Thank you.
Any other public comment? So I'll entertain a motion to continue this item to October 10th.
So move.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0.
Madam Clerk, please read the next item.
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2019-35. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending the city code to amend Chapter 8, Animals, Section 8-2. Number of pets, animals restricted, and Section 8.3, keeping of poultry. Domestic fowl, providing for severability, conflicts, codification, and effective date.
Again, Andre Anderson, Planning and Zoning Director. This is a request, a final public hearing and a request to make the backyard chicken keeping program a permanent program. If you recall, this was a pilot program that was established, and it sunsetted in August, in September of 2018, and the City Council extended the pilot program until August 31st for a resolution. To date, we've had received 21 temporary permits that have been issued. We are proposing a few minor changes to the current program as it becomes a permanent program. One, it forces to make it a permanent program. Second is to remove the need for a building permit for establishing a chicken coop in your backyard, and it also adds some flexibility as far as how the persons may achieve their requirements for, or prerequisite, I guess I should say, for having backyard chickens. This proposal is consistent with a strategic goal for growth management. Staff recommends approval of ordinance 2019-35, and asks that the City Council do the same.
Do I have any questions or comments by council? Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you. Andre, didn't we, when we discussed this at the very beginning, didn't we have setbacks in, were your chicken coops, is this still in there?
That is correct. The setback is 25 feet from the property line, and that's not changed.
What about the back, at the rear?
That's what I'm saying, 25 feet.
25 all the way around?
And that's not changed.
Okay, thank you.
Do I have any questions or comments from the public? Seeing you're hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please take roll.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0.
Madam Clerk, please read the next item.
First public hearing and introduction for ordinance number 2019-27. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending Land Development Code of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, to amend Table 3-7, Commercial and Industrial Uses, Article II Definitions, Article III, Division 2, Establishment and Districts of District Boundaries on Zoning Maps and Restrictions on Land, Water, Building, and Structures. Article III, Division 19, Sign Regulations, Article III, Division 29, Open Spaces and Recreation Districts, Providing for Severability, Conflicts, Codification, and Effective Date.
Again, Andre Anderson, Planning and Zoning Director. This is the first public hearing to establish an open space and recreation district within our Land Development Code. If you recall, this item is also related to the next two items related to Chisholm Park. Currently, the city has, does not have a specific designation for parks and recreation lands, and we currently use the professional zoning district category. And it was requested that we add a specific zoning district for open space and recreation, which this proposal is doing. It is consistent, and it would be consistent with our open space and future land use category. And there are several of the uses that are identified that would also have an additional siting standards included. I would also add some sign regulation consistent with existing requirements for parks. This item is consistent with a growth management goal, strategic plan goal. And the DRC and staff recommends approval of ordinance 2019-27. And the Planning Commission at their meeting recommends approval. They had a concern that we would remove the condition related to gun range municipal as a conditional use in the OR district from Table 3-7, which is included in your packet. And we ask the City Council also recommend approval of ordinance 2019-27.
So are you saying you removed the gun range?
That is a Planning Commission's recommendation.
Comment, so, okay.
As is, it is still included, and it would be for the council to approve orders 2019-27 as is, or modify it according to your wishes, consistent with the Planning Commission's recommendation.
Okay, do I have any questions or comments by council?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you. So this will cover all of the playgrounds, right?
It will call, it will cover all of the publicly owned parks and recreation properties.
They'll come under the same name, same for parks?
Right. It would no longer have a zoning designation of P, which is professional, but would have a new zoning designation of OR, which is open space recreation.
I got you. Thanks, sir.
So I had the same comment when I was in my agenda review about the gun range, and I would like to see that removed from the table as a conditional use myself. Are there any comments from the public? Mr. Clark?
Richard Clark, practicing landscape architect here in the City of St. Cloud, 1003 Florida Avenue. I just had an opportunity the other day to begin to look at this, and I definitely support creating a zoning category for something that's been on the future land use for several years now without having a zoning category. It would make my life easier from a planning standpoint. I guess one of the concerns I have is since, basically, this open space and recreation is effectively going to only be city property, I don't see how, I mean, is there a way that it could be effectively applied to any non-city-owned property in the city?
You're looking for the same, the same...
Well, I'm just, I'm just trying, from an ownership standpoint, is it strictly, is open space and recreation, does it have to be city-owned property in order to get that zoning designation?
Mr. Anderson?
If the property owner wants their property to be designated as park and open space, then it would fall under that zoning category.
Great.
That being the case, then I would have concerns with the way that the zone, it's currently written, that any, basically any facilities have to be publicly owned. So that can create a problem from a, from a usage standpoint. If somebody has their property zoned for this, they can't build any facilities, even though they may be permitted, because they have to be publicly owned.
Well, I think Andre's answer is technically correct. I think that in all practicality, the scenario you're opposing frankly would, would never happen. A private property owner would never consent to having their property zoned OR that they couldn't basically use for what they wanted to use it for. And I'd see, we don't typically see open recreational space developed by private property owners. It's usually part of a larger development that includes all other uses and more of the mixed-use thing. So, I mean, I guess on paper, it's a, it's a possibility, I would think.
You do have open space requirements for all subdivisions.
Yeah, but the open space requirements are part of the overall development of it, and they're not zoned. The property that, on which the open space exists, isn't zoned, or wouldn't be zoned OR. If it's a, it would be part of whatever subdivision zoning there is, whether it's a straight zoning or a PUD or a mixed-use. So I don't see how it would happen.
And some of the concerns I have just in regards to the permitted uses being, I mean, obviously, there's, you know, if it's city, city development, you're going to have the ability to control, you know, how much that is. But when you consider a floor area ratio of .3, on a one-acre site, you could get 13,000 square feet of a building in there based on what you're allowing, which can take up a pretty good amount of space. Even if it goes to three stories, it's reduced. But if it's, say, a restaurant and 13,000 square feet, you're going to have nearly an acre and a half on that one acre that needs to be parking. So, you know, there are concerns that I have that maybe need to be concerned. And then in regards to the uses, you have city government facilities, but you preclude government offices for being on there. So the question is, are you precluding a county or a state from being able to come in and put a facility into something that's zoned that way? Which is why I was saying, does it have to be city-owned property?
Well, actually, you are, because that was part of, as you might recall, this, part of this came up from requests from several citizens who came before you, as I recall, maybe Andre can remind me of this, that said, "We want to see something in your code that protects parks and recreation." That's how I recall this even being started. And so that's why this came about. So yes, it would preclude certain office buildings, whether they're public or not.
Well, I was talking specifically to government office use that's prohibited.
And I think that was, one of the attempts was to do it. If there's, if a government office is going to exist on any piece of property in St. Cloud, it's going to have to have a different zoning.
Okay. Then my last, my last one on the use table is in regards to arboretums. You have it as conditional use. As a park, an arboretum is obviously one of those things that actually belongs in a park, and I don't see how it's a conditional use. It should be a permitted use. Thank you.
Andre, you want to answer any of those comments?
Not particularly, but... So, an arboretum is, is in fact a permitted use. The fact that it's conditional does not make it not permitted. It just means that the council has the opportunity to add additional conditions as they see fit.
Great. So I'll entertain a motion from council?
So move. Second.
Well, the motion including the removal of the municipal gun range?
Yes.
Is that a motion?
Remove that. Yes, sir.
No, so move.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please take roll.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0.
Can I just ask who made the second?
It was Cooper and Askew.
Madam Clerk, please read the next item.
First public hearing and transmittal for ordinance number 2019-28. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning the future land use designation of park open space to approximately 127.99 acres identified at Chisholm Park, located at 4,700 Chisholm Park Trail, providing for amending of the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, filing of the Planning Commission's recommendations, improve for publication, applicability and effect, severability copies on file and effective date.
Again, Andre Anderson, Planning and Zoning Director. This is the first public hearing and transmittal of the comprehensive plan amendment for Chisholm Park. If you recall, this item was brought to you back, and it was adopted. The annexation occurred April 26 of 2018. It's been over a year that this property has not had a future land use designation for the city or a zoning for the city, partly because we don't have a, you wanted a specific zoning district that was consistent with park. And we had received comments from the public and raised, as the city attorney mentioned, had some concerns about the open space designation. And as such, we do not currently have a future land use nor zoning district on this property. As such, we are relegated to using the county's zoning and land use for this property. In addition, this property, the lack of a zoning for this property affects a current process that we are trying to undertake for the seaplane base, and we are fast approaching the deadline for permitting. And we are in jeopardy of losing that if we do not in fact adopt a zoning designation on this property. Very quickly, the existing use is institutional in the county. It's proposed future land use would be park open space in the city. It's compatible with our surrounding uses. It's also consistent with the strategic goals, goal for growth management, infrastructure, and public services. And staff recommends approval of this future land use amendment and to transmit it to the State Department of Economic Opportunity for further review. Planning Commission also recommends approval based on the 16 findings of the Land Development Code, and also recommends transmittal to the Department of Economic Opportunity, and we ask that the City Council do the same.
Okay, do you have any questions or comments by council? Any public would like to speak on this item? So I will entertain a motion on 2019-28.
Motion to approve. Second.
So I'm going to say, approved by Cooper, second by Askew. So I'm going to say, approved by Cooper, second by Askew. Madam Clerk, please take role.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Madam Clerk, please read the next item.
First public hearing and introduction for ordinance number 2019-29. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a zoning district of OR, open spaces and recreations, compatible with open park, open park open space, future land use designation change adopted by ordinance number 2019-28 for approximately 127.99 acres identified as Chisholm Park, located at 4,700 Chisholm Park Trail, providing for entering the designation of the official zoning map, following the Planning Commission's recommendations, and proof of publication, severability, conflicts, and effective date.
Again, Andre Anderson, Planning and Zone Director. This is the first public hearing and introduction of the corresponding zoning for the item that you just recommended approval for the future land use of Chisholm Park. Again, the, the existing zone is institutional in the county, and the proposed zoning would be open space based on the previously approved ordinance to establish the OR district. It is compatible with the surrounding area. It's also considered with a strategic goal for growth management, infrastructure, and public service. Staff recommends approval of ordinance 2019-29. The Planning Commission at their meeting also recommends approval of ordinance 2029 based on the 16 findings of the Land Development Code, and ask that the city council do the same.
Do I have any questions or comments from council? Councilmember Trace.
Andre, does the existing park meet all of the citing conditions that you have in, in that code?
It could, and it would. Because not knowing what would come in, but we have requirements that would ensure that it would not create any conflicts.
Do I have any public comment on this item? So I'll entertain a motion on 2019-29.
So moved.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Madam Clerk, please read the next item.
Resolution number 2019-137R. A resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, adopting the citizen participation, participation plan of the City of St. Cloud, St. Cloud's Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, in section 108, loans, programs, and providing for an effective date.
Good evening, Leanne Walker, Principal Planner with the City of St. Cloud. So the City of St. Cloud became eligible for HUD's Community Development Block Grant Entitlement Program. And so for the past few months, staff and our CDBG consultants have been preparing the required application materials, which include a five-year consolidated plan, an analysis of impediments to fair housing, a citizen participation plan, and an annual action plan. All of these encompassed involving the public during this time period. So before you tonight are two resolutions for your consideration related to the CDBG program. The first is the citizen's participation plan. This plan sets forth the city's policies and procedures for citizen participation in the CDBG program and other HUD programs that we may enter into. This ensures the involvement to the greatest extent possible, including public hearings, public notices, public display of program documents, just to name a few. The purpose of this plan and intent does meet the strategic plan goal for growth management, economic development, infrastructure, financial sustainability, and public service. For the citizen's participation plan, staff has reviewed this and recommends city council adopt this resolution to implement the citizen participation plan. Staff is available for any questions. We also have our consultant here. If you would like, I can go ahead and present the second part of the CDBG program, and then you can vote on them separately afterwards if you'd like more information.
Are you saying 138R?
Yes, I can, I can, we can do that one now if you'd like.
We'll need to read that in first. Madam Clerk, please read the next item.
Resolution number 2019-138R. A resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, adopting the fiscal year 2019, 2023, five-year consolidated plan of fiscal year 2019, annual action plan in the fiscal year 2019 to 2023, analysis of impediment of fair housing, and providing an effective date.
All right, so upon approval of our application to HUD for the CDBG program, the city would be awarded $319,076. They would be used to implement the first-year annual action plan fiscal year 2019. And in your packet, you have, we have the five-year consolidated plan, the five-year analysis of impediments to fair housing, as well as the annual action plan that encompass this resolution before you. These plans do meet the strategic plan goals of growth management, economic development, infrastructure, financial sustainability, and public service. And we are excited about this opportunity and request that city council adopt resolution, this resolution in order to process our application to HUD to be considered for approval. So staff is available for any questions. The consultant is also here, but we would like to recommend approval for both resolutions 137 and 138R.
Are there any questions or comments from council?
Very thorough report.
Are there any public comments on these items? Okay, so I will entertain a motion on 2019-137R.
So moved.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Councilmember Cooper.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
I'll entertain a motion for 2019-138R.
So moved. Public?
I asked for public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, so who made the motion?
I thought you said, go ahead.
Motion approved.
Second.
So Trace, Askew, okay. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Clerk, please read the next item.
Discussion on Possible Action Regarding the Official Name for the All-Inclusive Park Located at 901 Virginia Avenue.
Stephanie Holcamp, Parks and Recreation Director. Okay, so first I just want to announce that the park is open. It opened last Thursday. So, but here tonight on the agenda is to name, to officially name the park. So a little background, we started back probably the end of April, beginning of May, talking to the public, staff, the Recreation Advisory Committee, and getting their, getting their suggestion on park names. So during this process, we came, there's several names or themes that emerged. And they are up there in front of you, Common Ground Park, Cloud Adventure Canary Park, Raindrop Sensory, and Imaginazium. Yeah, the, the last one's pretty, pretty inventive. During the June Recreation Advisory Committee, the committee unanimously voted to call the park Canary Park. After that, the, all five names were sent out to the camp kids that we have, the summer camp kids we have. The two top names were Canary Park and Cloud Adventure Park. Then in June, for about two weeks, we put out a social media post to get the residents' comments and feedback. We used Canary Park and Cloud Adventure, since those were the two top names. We received 689 comments on our Facebook page, or on this post, I'm sorry. We, the, saw 299 shares, and we reached 39,000 people with this post. Out of that came 172 votes for Canary Park, 62 votes for Cloud Adventure Park. Then we also reached out through our constant contact by direct email. 60 people voted for Canary Park, 42 for Cloud Adventure Park. So all in all, the total is 232 votes for Canary Park, 104 votes for Cloud Adventure Park. So staff is asking that you officially name 901 Virginia Park Canary Park. That's it.
Thank you. I wish you had done more research on that. Are there any comments or questions from council? Councilmember Askew.
I got a comment. It has nothing to do with the name. So I've been, we've been driving around a lot. Everything is packed with people, which is fantastic. It's exactly what we wanted. What I'm noticing, though, is there's no crosswalk on 10th Street. So something to think about in the future. I could see some challenges with that. So if that's something we can look at as a crosswalk for our 10th Street.
That was in the plan.
Yeah, we're, we're doing the crosswalk, and we're doing the, I, I'm not a streets person, but I think it's a traffic calming, you know, so the kids can push it and it, you know, flashes lights so they can get across safely.
Right.
Yeah, we are, we're, we're still working on it.
That park is so used right now that I drove by at like nine o'clock. There's not a light on that thing, and I can hear laughing and giggling, and people are having a good time. I know it's new and everything, so fantastic job.
Thank you.
Are there any public comments? Okay, well, I will entertain a motion to officially name the park at 901 Virginia Avenue.
So moved.
What's the name?
Canary Park. I'm sorry.
I thought he was going to say.
So moved, Canary Park.
Second.
I held that out for you.
Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Madam Clerk, please read the next item.
Discussion and direction on the presentation by OnStreet Media.
Hi, Brian Miller for OnStreet Media. Some of you all may noticed, over the past few months, there's some advertisements located at traffic signal cabinet, traffic signal intersections throughout St. Cloud. About, back in December, we worked with Osceola County to begin placing approved traffic signal frames on these cabinets throughout Osceola County. It was, from conversations with the county, we were told that there were select locations within St. Cloud we were allowed to do so on. That information turned out to be incorrect, and so I'm here today to kind of have a conversation, discussion about any questions you may have, and, and present what it is we do and how it works. Oh, it's up here. So these are some of the locations that you may have seen in the Osceola County area. And in case you don't recall, there's a traffic signal cabinet that controls the light system. We are creating this frame to go around that utility box that is frequently graffiti-ed or old poster board is placed on it. This is one of the locations over at Champions Gate and I-4. This is an example of something you may see. This is actually located in Apopka, but kind of your typical-looking cabinet with old graffiti or old poster board on there, and what it looks like afterwards. Another shot of that. Another location, also not in St. Cloud. And just some information about the proposal we have. We currently have an agreement with Osceola County. We're in negotiations at the moment with the City of Kissimmee on this. Basically, we lease the, the space, the cabinet from the city. We provide 20% of our advertising revenue to the city, regardless of what that fixed number is. If it, if it rises, if it falls, it's 20% back to the city, paid twice a year. All the maintenance of that cabinet is taken on by us. There's no cost to the city at all. There's nothing at all that the city needs to do besides collect a check from us twice a year. Frequent questions are regarding content. We have an agreement with Federal Highway Administration on prohibited types of advertisements. It's your typical sort of things, gambling-related, drug-related, alcohol-related, sexual-related, things of that nature, political as well. And basically, we get the approval of the city. If there's anything that is frowned upon, we, we won't put it up. And then there's expected revenue. It's, it's based on the amount of locations there are. We think there's approximately 15 locations available in St. Cloud, 20% of our, our expected revenue, which is in the realm of about $500 per month. So somewhere in the realm of, on an annual basis, I would say $13,000 to $17,000 for year one. And we've, have found that revenues are rising quickly in, going into our second year. So basically, I'll answer any questions you all may have on this. If you'd like, I can go back through a little more history as well.
Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you. I'll start out. I'm always the bad guy. I don't like the looks of it. It's too big. It's going to bulky. It's going to be, we're trying to make it enhanced. This is not enhanced. I'm sorry.
Okay.
That's me, my thought.
So as I, as I mentioned, it goes around the existing traffic control cabinet.
I understand.
Which is approximately five feet tall by three and a half, five feet wide. Our measurements increase in width by about maybe eight inches and in height by about a foot and a half at the request of the DOT in Tallahassee, so that they could utilize space above for battery backup in case of a brownout.
Just telling you, I'm not, not for that at all. Thank you.
City Attorney.
I just had a question. How is the county or any of the other jurisdictions you work with, how are they addressing the issue about whether these are considered off-site signage?
So we have, I'm trying to think about how to address your, your question. I'd have to look through the, the current agreement that we have in place with Osceola County. Sign ordinance is, is discussed in there. I've given a copy to Ms. Miller when I met with her several months back. I'm not exactly sure how they have addressed it, basically, as long as we fall within their, their signing ordinance, as far, as far as I know.
Well, and that's one of the concerns that we have when we look at it, because technically, these signs are not advertising a sign, are not advertising for a business or, or product that's for sale on the location of the property. So technically, they would, they would be considered under the city's code off-site signage, much like a small billboard or anything like that. So I'm not, I'd like to see how other jurisdictions are addressing it, because the city's code with regard to off-site signing isn't that different than a lot of jurisdictions, so it's something I think you'd have to look at.
So.
Whatever they wanted.
I'm sorry?
They could put whatever they wanted on that sign.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think he's, the gentleman has pointed out to you, yeah, they could put out whatever they wanted, but there are, they're proposing there are some restrictions on the content.
Well, I understand that, yes, sir.
Yeah, so two things. One, there, there's the restrictions on the content per the agreement with Federal Highway, and then as well as with Osceola County itself and whatever other city and county. It can be more encompassing than what is currently in place. With regards to the signing ordinance, we're also in negotiations with other cities and counties where they're going to be placing a, they're going to be creating a clause within their signing ordinance to accommodate for this.
Well, and that's why I asked the question, because I wanted to see, we, we would clearly, at a minimum, have to do something like that to address the city's existing sign code.
City Manager.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'd like Mr. Anderson to come and address staff's concerns.
While he's walking up, I'll tell you my concerns. I, I don't think they're attractive for me. I, I find them unsightly, you know, you get off, you get off the turnpike there at Canoe Creek Road, and it's just like, wham, there's like a big illuminated sign right there. I mean, I don't find them aesthetically pleasing or something that I would want in the city, but I'll let Mr. Anderson speak.
Thank you. Andre Anderson, Planning and Zone Director. This item was brought to our attention, and I was asked to review and provide comments. So these signage are, as Ms., as the applicant said, was on the F-duty electrical control boxes, and they are in fact inconsistent with our land development code. How this started was they received a code violation from our Code Enforcement Division regarding the signage that were not approved by the city. The signage, in my professional opinion, is similar to, tantamount to a mini billboard. And again, that is inconsistent with our code, as our city does not permit billboards. It's also inconsistent with the criteria that our city attorney just mentioned for off-site signage. That's section 2.19.6.7. off-site signage, that's Section 2.19.6.7, with respect to off-site commercial signs. So again, it violates our code and also violates the council's directive that we address visual clutter and to avoid any type of signage that would be detracting and not add to our aesthetic that we are trying to achieve in the city of St. Cloud. This is an example of the current signage that exists at US 192 and Narcoosi Road. It's on all four sides, on the rear, which would be, I guess, towards the sidewalk, you'd see the OnStreet Media logo and then the metal frame, and you can see that it is, in fact, higher than the existing traffic control box. This is an example of, again, off-site signage for a facility that's not within the city limits. This is an example of another sign on US 192 and Old Canoe Creek Road. It's for a glass and mirrors establishment that's within the city of Kissimmee. This example is not within the city limits. It's an example of one that's within Onin Corbett, Osceola County, at the intersection of Buena Ventura Lakes and Simpson Road. It's for a restaurant in The Loop. Again, not, as I said, but this is an example of one that's not within the city limits. And again, these, in my opinion, are examples of mini billboards. I do, however, offer an alternative that the city should consider, and that is to expand the city's downtown mural program, where we'd have art on the boxes, and this would then utilize the entire box as an art piece. This is a program that's consistent with many other jurisdictions in the state of Florida and outside the state of Florida, as well as internationally. The example on the left is an example of one that's part of the State of 50 Mills program, and they call it the Art Box Program. There's a program also in the city of Titusville that's called Art Outside the Box. And the example on the right is an example that our deputy city manager took while on vacation in Ottawa. And so it's, these are examples of aesthetics that I think the city would benefit from and would actually expand our art program within the city limits. So staff's recommendation at this point is for denial of the request by OnStreet Media to install signage on traffic signal control boxes within the city limits of St. Cloud, and also to comply with the code of citation to remove the signage from the existing traffic control boxes within the city limits of St. Cloud. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andre. Is there any other comments from council?
No ma'am.
I thought you hit your button. Any comments from the public? Mr. Klar. You need to sit over the front.
I need the exercise.
Richard Klar, practicing landscape architect, city of St. Cloud, 1003 Florida Avenue. I'm not going to, you know, delve into the aesthetic issue, and that's everyone else's opinion, but just from a standpoint of the reference to mini billboards, I don't see from a size standpoint and what's happening, any difference between what is proposed in this case versus what's on many of the city bus stop structures here in town. So just keep that in mind when you're talking about whether it's appropriate or not. Thank you.
It's totally different, but not the same. They're moving.
Okay, so, do we need a motion for this, or you just need direction?
Well, we're just looking for direction about whether this is something the council wants to explore.
He just needs direction. So, Mr. Cooper, you're a no?
I'm a no.
I'm a no.
No.
I mean, I'm always a fan of revenue streams for the city. I, you know, $14,000 a year isn't a ton to make a difference. So, yeah, I'm fine with council's direction.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
And that will take down all of the signs that's in the city now?
Yes.
There's a pending code enforcement matter, so we have, hopefully they will.
They'll be coming down? Thanks, sir.
Madam Clerk, please read the next item.
Discussion and possible action regarding vacancy on the tree advisory committee.
Who does, does somebody read this?
Yes, before you have the tree advisory committee handout, we have two applicants that had put in application. Today, we did touch base with Mr. Busby, and he has withdrawn his application. And we did touch base with Ms. Rivera, and she still is interested. So we have the vacant position of alternate number two, which is an at-large position. And anyone could make that motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve, Michelle Rivera.
Do I need to take a public comment?
Actually, yes.
Any public comment? I'm sorry, so, Mr. Cooper, you made the motion?
No.
He did.
I'll make a motion, yeah.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Cooper.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0.
City Attorney, do you have any items?
I do not have anything. Doing a fine job running the meeting.
Thank you. City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. First, I'd like to recognize Mr. Brian Wheeler. If you come up here, he's agreed to serve as our interim Environmental Utilities Director. What I'm doing right now is I'm actually splitting Public Services back into two departments, Public Works and Environmental Utilities, over the next couple of months. And Brian has graciously asked, or stepped in to help us out, so thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Just wanted to recognize you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Knew you couldn't stay retired long.
Yeah, is this retirement?
Just stay.
That was the deal, that this has to be temporary. I'm not looking for another full-time.
We appreciate it. Thank you so much.
It's temporary compared to 33 years or whatever you have, so.
The second thing I have, Deputy Mayor, is the, I have an agreement here, a engaged letter of engagement from Orlando Utilities Commission. They have an Electrical Integrated Resource Plan, and they're setting up a committee to have stakeholders from their service area to participate in this, what they call EIRP process. So I'm asking for nominations from the council for this. I'd like to get at least two people. The working group stakeholders, they want residential, fixed income, key accounts, commercial, community partners, OUC employees, industrial, environmental, OUC program participants such as solar, EV, conservation programs, or additional groups. So I was asking for two nominations, and if the council gives me two names, they'll be submitted to OUC, and they'll be vetted for this, and they'll have to go to two meetings over a six-week period and give their input about services OUC provides.
Can we give that to you later, or?
Well, if you don't have anybody, obviously, we'd have to.
Yeah, I guess, what are the meetings? And, I mean, do you guys have an info sheet?
Actually, they're supposed to start in August. Early in August is what it says. The minimum of two meetings will be held, with additional meetings added throughout the stakeholder engagement process as needed.
So you need something tonight? Right, I mean, I don't think we have another meeting until?
Until August 22nd.
Yeah.
Yeah, I used up all my asks on the Public Safety Committee.
I thought of two people if you want to consider, Tammy Madison from Food Pantry, and then Bobby Beecham as a business owner. Well, they're still going to be vetted. They can still turn it down, but it's supposed to be approved by the governing body.
So you've spoken with them, and they're willing?
No.
I see Ms. Torrance is standing up.
Come on out there.
I think Mr. Klar wants to be on it, too.
I think he stood up, too.
Hi, Terry Torrance, Orlando Utilities. To answer Bill's question, what they're doing, our integrated ERP process is they have a stakeholder working group. And so it's kind of an informal ask for you guys because of your participation with OUC and things like that. So as far as OUC is concerned, if you guys just, we need, what we're looking for is we're trying to get a group of folks together by, and have the names by the end of July, because the meeting's going to start in August.
And how often are they?
It's being managed by an outside company that does all of our, but my understanding is it's two times, and then there might be some phone calls and things like that. The concept is looking at the future of our electric utility, like solar and renewables, and what does it look like, and how does that fit into the community and the community needs? You know, because when you start looking at balancing things like the cost of solar versus the cost of natural gas, and how does that affect, impact, things like that. And that was when Bill and I talked about it, one of the things that we discussed was it's important to have someone that's reflective of lower income and things like that, because they're going to be kind of looking for those things that might be more impactful in the community. But any of those compartments that he talked about, residential, commercial, what have you, we're just looking for names. If you guys want to email them to Mr. Sturgeon and have him emailing to me, I don't know that it, I mean, I don't know formally it requires a vote from your perspective, from our perspective, it does not. It's a working group.
So is it during the workday?
I would say probably no. I can't tell you that for sure, because the company that's managing that, but I would guess probably not. And the reason why is because it's designed as a stakeholder working group, and, you know, we're going to be doing community outreach. We'll be down here talking and having community meetings associated with that, but this is more of an intensive group, right? So these are the people that can speak for a group of other folks. The reason why the food pantry lady was a good option is because she kind of sees the needs of the community in a different way than maybe I would see the needs of the community. And so that was kind of, you know, what we were trying to think of, of somebody that could kind of speak on behalf of not just themselves, but a group of folks.
What about, and I don't know if she's available, but Mary Downing?
She's, does she live in St. Cloud?
I'm not sure. Do you have to live, do they have to live in the city?
Service area.
Yeah, you want to, yeah, I mean.
I'm just thinking, because she represents.
No, I agree, and actually, she came up when I was talking internally.
So you can give that, so your people to know it's during the day or night?
Mr. Cooper.
I'm sorry.
Oh, that, I just didn't, so anyway, her name did come up. We were looking for someone, and not, that she's not a good person in the community, but I was, we were looking for somebody from St. Cloud, or a couple of people from St. Cloud.
Place for grace.
Would council be okay with just delegating this to the city manager to find appropriate parties to?
Yeah, I don't have no problem.
We good with that?
Can you handle that?
I can't. And I'll let you know.
Choose wisely.
And I'll let you know.
I think four of us said no problem.
All right, thank you.
All right, any question, anything else? Okay, thanks.
I know you just wanted to get up here.
Yeah.
Thanks, Terry.
Okay, is that it?
Yes, ma'am, that's all I have.
Councilmember Trace.
I'm good.
Councilmember Askew.
So there was a special meeting tonight in Orlando. The Secretary of the State was there. It was the 2019 Florida Main Street Awards. Happy to announce the business of the year is Bruising Blues here in the city of St. Cloud, so congratulations to them, and way to get on the map. So that was very cool.
I think the Main Street program won an award, too.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm on their board. What's the award they won?
It's 20-year anniversary, right?
Yeah, I know they're 20 years.
The New York Avenue Improvement, won an outstanding public improvement merit award.
Fantastic.
Awesome. All right, Councilmember Cooper. I'm sorry, are you done?
I'm done.
Councilmember Cooper.
Bill, can we find something about Massachusetts Avenue? The, the couple of homes that the city owns?
Yes.
That we can get Zillow or something to, the home rental properties, I think they're way, way under rented now, and should be fair value, fair market value. I think we need to get there. We're not there. If you'll tell us.
Sure. Right now, the city owns two homes that are right behind City Hall here. We rent those two for $500 a month. Right now, we have a police officer and another employee that have those leases for the next year. And I think Mr. Cooper's point is, is, you know, do we need to go out and do some market rate, raise the rates?
Well, those aren't market rate, for sure.
He wants market.
Market rate's like 1,500.
15 years ago, that was market rate.
They're somewhere around $1,000 to $1,200 a month.
Yeah.
And Bill, again, for you, could you give me some update, what's going on with Fifth Street or the church there beside Transition House? What's going on? I've been going by, and they don't do a thing. There's nothing started, any permits? They're going way past the time. What are we going to do?
Does staff have any updates?
Everybody looking at somebody else, and nobody knows.
I know a little bit of that update.
Well, I had a heavy one there.
I think it's the 20, does Melissa help me with that one? The church that's coming in on Brown Chapel Road, is that the one you're talking about?
Fifth Street, right there beside Transition House, yes.
Right.
Well, can we just, can you just provide an update to them, seeing how, doesn't seem like anybody's ready?
Email update.
This, you're referring to the Muslim Center, correct? The Muslim Center?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So they have a conditional use that is about to expire, and that's all I know at this point. We will get some more information for you and give you a full update.
Okay, if you could stand one more, I think the next one's for you, too.
Okay.
Tell me what's going on with Dolly's property up on New York Avenue.
Dolly's.
There's not a, they don't have the final permit?
Okay, that's a building department question.
I'm sorry, I'm pointing to you, the wrong one. I'm sorry. Yes, sir. No difference at all. Go ahead. Thank you.
Bob DeTherich, Building Director. Dolly Clements was in the office two weeks ago, and I asked her when she would be calling in for her final inspection. She said she still had a couple of things to do. I encouraged her to please let us know when she was done, so we could get this closed out. Think all she needs is an electrical final and a building final. Everything else is complete.
And there's a timeframe on that?
She should be getting down to the wire. It's been probably close to six months since she had her last inspection.
Can you watch it so we can get it done? I'd like to see it. Let's get them open.
Yes, sir. I agree completely.
New York, we need to get the people in there.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I think that's... That'll do it. Thank you, ma'am.
Great. I don't have anything to add, except I'm excited about the park. So now we have reached the information section and report section. So Monday, July 29th, the city council will have a budget workshop at 6:00 PM in City Hall, Council Chambers. Thursday, August 1st, will be the grand opening and ribbon-cutting ceremony at the Cannery Park, at 11:00 AM. Thursday, August 15th, we'll have another city council workshop at 6:00 PM in City Hall. And Thursday, August 22nd, we'll have a city council meeting, 6:30 PM, City Hall, Council Chambers. So don't forget, there is the warrants list number 15 in the report section. There's the Recreation Advisory Committee meeting minutes from May of 2019, and the Recreation Advisory Committee organizational meeting minutes, May 2019. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting.
Good job.
Yay!